Good evening. Good evening. The time is now five thirty-three. I would like to call to order the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Dr. Zippora Miller, Chair of this committee and the District Five Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone would please introduce themselves, starting with the board members who are members of this committee, and then the guest board members, then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff and the Board Office Staff in that order.
Sheila Adams Stafford, Board Member representing District Four.
Hello, Brandon Jackson, School Board Member, District Six.
Visiting Board Member Judy McInnes Mary, Chair of the Board.
Hello, Judith White, Chief Academic Officer.
General Paul Cadet, Director of Current Technical Education.
Good evening. Keon McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Happy Monday. Desanne Manzano Lee, Coordinating Supervisor, Specialty Programs.
Good evening. Edrika Hall, Supervisor for Advanced Programs.
Good evening. Olivia Pearson, Supervisor of College Readiness.
Good evening. Jessica Guerrero, Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Ms. Guerrero, could you please call the role?
Yes. Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Suroh Ruiz? Mr. Jackson?
Present.
We have four.
Thank you. May I now have a motion to adopt the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting agenda?
So move.
Remember, Jackson, can you second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes?
So. A second.
Thank you so much. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting minutes have been approved. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comments.
Thank you so much. So there are no registered public comment speakers for this evening. So now let's move over to the discussion items three point oh. Dr. Judith White, I will now yield the floor to you and your team and colleagues to present this evening's agenda: College and Career Readiness, Career and Technical Education, Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and Dual Enrollment.
Thank you so much. So, Dr. McDaniel, I would say if your team could go first, and then we'll follow the College of Career Readiness up with CTE follow behind you. So I'll turn it over to Dr. McDaniel.
Great. Good evening, everyone. We are excited to provide some highlights regarding our Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate programs first. So I will turn it over to Ms. Edrika Hall, who's going to be sharing her screen, and she is the supervisor who oversees those programs.
And Edrika, you are on me when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me go ahead and share my slides. You should be able to see my slides now. Yes?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Edrika Hall, and I'm the Supervisor for Advanced Programs. And tonight, the goal of tonight's session is to provide an overview and updates regarding Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate. So we're going to start with our Advanced Placement program. Currently, in our district, we have twenty-six high schools that offer AP courses for students. As you know, the AP program is offered through the College Board, and it is an opportunity for students to engage in rigorous college-level coursework while they are still in high school. Students can also have an opportunity to earn college credits by taking the AP exam at the end of the course and earning a qualifying score on that exam. So in our schools, we have thirteen schools that offer ten or more AP courses. The number of AP courses that are offered across the district do vary by school, based on size of school, and also based on student interest as it relates to the AP courses. Within the twenty-six schools that offer AP courses, we have three schools that offer the AP Capstone Diploma. The AP Capstone Diploma is a program that is offered through the College Board that requires students to take two specific courses, AP Seminar and AP Capstone, and then they also have to take at least three additional AP courses and earn a three or higher on the qualifying exam in order to earn the diploma. Also, as you know, the College Board launched a new course last year, AP African-American Studies. We currently have one school, which is Frederick Douglass, that is currently in the pilot, first-year pilot for that course. We have two additional schools that will be joining the pilot going into next school year as well for AP African-American Studies. And what is not on this slide as well is College Board is launching another new AP course going into next year, which is AP Pre-Calculus, and we will be offering that opportunity for our students to take AP Pre-Calculus and having an opportunity to earn that math credit going into college. All right. On this next slide, we have some data highlights from our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Advanced Placement exam season. So this data is reflective of the exams that were taken in May of two thousand and twenty-two. Just to give you some context, last year, we had enrollment of about five thousand students who were enrolled in an AP course, and at the start of the exam season, we had about four thousand nine hundred students who were scheduled to take the exam. However, once the exam season ended, we landed at two thousand seven hundred and eighteen students who took an exam in May of two thousand and twenty-two for a total of four thousand two hundred and twenty-four exams that were taken. Of those exams, our FARMs representation was one thousand one hundred and sixty-two students who are, who were FARMs who took an exam in May, and then our non-FARMs was one thousand five hundred and fifty-six. You can also see on the slide that at least forty-one percent of our students earned a score of three or higher, which put them in a position to be able to earn college credit based on the university that they may have been applying to and based on the course that they took. So those are just some of the highlights there. Currently, we are sitting at an enrollment in AP of five thousand seven hundred and thirty students, and we have approximately three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six that are scheduled to take an exam in May for this year. So those are some of the highlights for our Advanced Placement program in terms of what has taken place last year and then also going into this year's AP exam season. Moving on to our International Baccalaureate Program, we currently have five high schools that are currently have an IB program, IB Diploma program. Within the International Baccalaureate Program, there are four programs that schools can offer. We offer three of them, which is our Primary Years Program or PYP, which is offered at the elementary level. We have our Middle Years Program or NYPD, which is offered at the middle school level but also at the high school level because that is for students in grades six through ten. And then we have our Diploma Program, which is offered at the IB schools. And so we currently have one continuing pathway, which finishes at Frederick Douglass High School. So students who start in Melwood Elementary School in the PYP can continue on into the NYPD at James Madison and then continue on to the DP in Frederick Douglass. And they also have the opportunity to continue engaging in the NYPD in Frederick Douglass, which is PYP and NYPD are school-wide programs. So every ninth and tenth grader at Frederick Douglass is engaged in the NYPD. For the IB Program students, do you have an end-of-course exam that they take? One-year courses, that exam is taken at the end of that instructional year in May. For our two-year courses, students will engage in instruction for two years, and then the exam is taken at the end of, in May, at the end of that second year of instruction for the students. Here are some highlights from our May twenty-two, May, May twenty-two exam season for the IB. We had two hundred and eight students who completed at least one subject submission in May of two thousand and twenty-two. And by subject submission, in the IB, the courses are grouped by six subjects, and so students have to take a course in each, in one, each one of those six subject groups in order to earn the diploma, along with completing what is called the CAS Creativity Activity and Service Project. They also have to do an extended essay, and they also have to take Theory of Knowledge. So that is called the DP Core. Within last year's exam season, we had eight hundred and thirty-four total student submissions for the entire May twenty-two, twenty-two exam session. We had a hundred and thirty-one Diploma Candidates across the five IB schools. So that was a hundred and thirty-one students who were Diploma-seeking students for the IB. We do have some students who take the IB course. They may not be Diploma students. We call those Core Students because there may be an IB course that they're interested in, and so they take that course. And within the students who took the course, we had sixty-two point six percent of the students who earned a subject score of four or higher on at least one subject submission. So these are some data highlights for you around the AP, around the IB program as well. And then on this slide, this just gives you some information on some of the benefits for students in the AP or in the IB program. And so you can see that in both program, both program students do have an opportunity to earn college credit based on completion of the program, taking the exam. And most, there are a plethora of universities that accept both AP and IB, and IB is also accepted internationally. So students in that program decide that they want to study abroad, they do have the option of possibly earning credits to study abroad as well. It definitely is an enhancement on their transcript when they go to apply to colleges and universities. They do look at that to see, did they take any AP courses? Were they in the IB program? And for some of them, it does allow them the opportunity to possibly not have to take introductory classes when they get to college. We have had students in the past who have started college as a sophomore based on the number of credits that they earned either for AP or for IB. So definitely has an added benefit there. But along with that, being engaged in either AP or IB definitely helps to build their confidence in taking college-level classes. And so when they leave us, they feel confident and ready to be able to engage in the rigor that is waiting for them in college. And so that is the information I have to share with you on AP and IB. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. I see Board Member Sheila Adams Stafford. Has her hand up?
Yes, and I do apologize. I'm off camera. I'm in the middle of kid transport right now, but I just first want to say I had the awesome opportunity to see the IB program in action, and I just want to say kudos to your team. I mean, it was so amazing. If I can just describe what I saw, it was the fourth-grade class. They had like this white chart paper out, and they were debating over how to, you know, calculate different prices within like different supermarket clippings. They were having so much academic talk. They were trying to rework the equation together, and it was just such a testament to the great work that you all are doing in IB. So I just want to shout out, I wish I had that teacher's name. I will get it by the end of tonight, but it was at Excel Charter. And it was just awesome. So I just wanted to give you all some shout-outs and kudos on that. Also, I wanted to know, I don't know if I heard this highlighted, but I know you all had some really great data around Latino students and passage rates on AP exams, and I feel like I heard this mentioned in a recent meeting, and I saw some of the data myself, and I was wondering if you could share some of that, because that's just some really great information to share. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about, excuse me, if you could talk a little bit more about the courses where you're seeing, you know, the most, the highest passage rates? And also, maybe if you could talk a little bit about what you all, if you all are considering requiring students that are enrolled in the AP course to take the AP exam, if that's something you've maybe done in the past or something you have considered, or if you're not, just maybe just sharing a little bit more about that. And then my last question was around the site selection for the IB program. Do schools apply to that, or sort of what is the process behind that? But those are my questions and comments. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. And first, I just want to thank you for shopping at Excel Charter. They are new to the IB. They just brought on IB last year. So it's great to hear that you saw some great teaching and learning going on in the classroom over there. I don't have the Hispanic data in front of me right now. I probably know the report that you're referring to because I did provide some of that for one of our other offices recently in terms of the percentage of students who are not only enrolling in the AP courses, but also having success on the exams. But I will find that for you all so that I can share it with you before the meeting is over. As it relates to courses where we see the highest pass rates, that's challenging because it varies across the district, but I will say that we typically see more success in our humanities APs. So that's going to be your English APs, your social studies APs. So we tend to see the higher pass rates in those APs. We do have some success in pockets in our STEM APs, which would be your sciences and your math APs, but it does vary across the district and based on the schools that are also offering those courses as well. I believe your last question was around the selection for IB. So most of the schools that have IB have had it for a very long time, and most of the time, it is typically the school who reaches out to say, we're interested in bringing this program on to our campus for our community. And then there's a whole process that we go through in order to say yes or no. And I don't know if Dr. White or Dr. McDaniel wants to chime in, but in the past, it has been the school who has reached out to say that they were interested in having the IB at, on their campuses based on what they saw for the IB and how it could be a benefit to their students and to their communities.
The only thing I'll say additionally to that is just at the high school level, it isn't more the school choice, but also we have to look at boundaries and where students are pulled from as all of our IB programs at the high school level service central areas, central different high schools. And so they pull from a variety of different high schools. And so we have to look at, of course, transportation, the space that's available for students in the program and make sure that we have locations across the district where every student can participate.
And Dr. McDaniel, your volume is a little low. We heard you, but I just wanted you to know your volume is a little low. The only thing I would add to what Ms. Hall and Dr. McDaniel indicated is that we're constantly also looking at that data to determine the need, you know, over time, which we're here tonight, is we have so many opportunities for our students that at one time before we had dual enrollment and all these other things, our IB program had a lot of students, but we have so many opportunities, you know. So IB is one of the programs that costs, it's definitely cost us a lot of money to run that program. We want to make sure that we have investment back. And so it's, it's, it's a program that we're constantly looking at on how we can get more kids through more with diplomas, especially with the amount of funds that we spend to make sure that that program can maintain. That, that's interesting. I'd like to hear more about that and explore that a bit more. And I guess my, just one follow-up is, are you all sort of codifying all of the strategies that you're using to get students to pass these exams, especially when I heard you, you know, mentioning how you'd broken it down by FARM students? I think you've got like the golden key that everyone in America wants to know. How are you supporting students in passing these assessments? And I, I'm just wondering, you know, harvesting that knowledge that's helping you achieve that with those students. And you don't have to answer for it right now. It's just something I was just thinking about, but this is just great to hear.
So we will definitely provide some additional context for you. One of the things I can share with you right now is what we did. I want to say this is two thousand and twenty-three. So I think, Dr. White, it's been at least six years where we started offering the N County Summer Institute for our AP teachers to make sure that they stayed on cycle with their training, the official training through the College Board, to ensure that they stayed up to date with the expectations and requirements for the course, and also just making sure that, along with myself, that I collaborate with the instructional supervisors who provide support for the content side and the instruction side to make sure that teachers are getting that support there as well. And we do also provide yearly professional development for the IB program as well to ensure that those teachers are also staying up to date with their content expectations.
Thank you so much. Board Member Adam Stafford, was that it for you?
Yes, thank you.
I had the same question Board Member Adam Stafford had, and you answered it about the AP courses with the two percent increase. I was like, particularly coming out of COVID, there was something that you had to have done, and you, you talked about the professional development that you've instituted in-house. So, and I know there's AP institutes that are around. You have instituted one just particularly to, for our school system, teachers within our system.
Yeah. So we, for the past, we've had three cycles of in-district summer institutes where summer of two thousand and seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one, we offered AP Summer Institutes, week-long AP Summer Institutes for specific courses, and we try to rotate them to ensure that we can get all of the courses in. And then also throughout the year, we do what is called AP Day with the Reader. And so that's an opportunity for teachers to engage in a one-day training, and we typically do it in the spring, so before they're going into exam season, just to kind of give some, the teachers a little bit more support as they move into that final space of exam prep and making sure that the students are ready for those exams. And so we, those are done by, all by content. And so like, we just did one for English to support the English teachers. So those are some of the things that we do. And then throughout the year, we also, if, you know, something comes up through College Board, College Board has released a lot of resources for AP. They have an entire YouTube channel that, where they have courses that are taught by AP teachers that students can engage in. So we push those out in April to the students so that they can engage in those as well. So we try to take advantage of all the resources that are available for students and teachers to support them.
That is amazing. Thank you for sharing. One last question. The instructors for the AP Institute, are they in-house instructors, or do you contract with College Board?
So we contract with College Board because when we do the official College Board training, College Board has consultants that they use by content that they train to provide the training for teachers around the country. So anytime we do an official College Board training, the consultants are coming from that pool of trained consultants.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Board members, any other questions? Seeing none. I was trying to practice my wait time, but I think seeing none. Dr. White, if you wanted to move on to your next.
Dr. McDaniel or Ms. Desanne Manzano Lee, who is next?
Thank you, Dr. White. I believe based on the slide, Ms. Pearson, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Olivia, do you want me to drive your slides for you?
That would be amazing.
Okay.
Thank you. So, good evening again. I'm Olivia Pearson, and I supervise College Readiness. And I'm just going to share some information about our very many dual enrollment programs in the district. So students are able to participate in dual enrollment after they complete grade ten if they have an unweighted cumulative GPA of two, of three point oh, or a GPA of two point five with a standardized test score. We also have other programs that, that go earlier than that, but right now, I'm going to just talk about the specific programs we have. We can, students can take courses at any public college or university for dual enrollment. However, we have partnerships specifically with three institutions: Prince George's Community College, Bowie State University, and the University of Maryland College Park. At Prince George's Community College, we work with them for our students to go on campus to participate.
Is she fro, is she the only one frozen? Okay, so I'll ju, I'll just pick up.
I think so.
I'll just pick up where she left off. So right now, we have partnerships with Bowie, Prince George, and University of Maryland. I know for Prince George's, actually for all three, our students have an opportunity to come to the campus. I think that's where she was leaving off, to come to campus, and/or they can take courses online. You know, before the pandemic, many of our programs were going to the university. Of course, in the middle of the pandemic, when we transitioned to online, since we've come back, for some of the universities, it's easier for them to even have instructors if we have courses online. So we can keep going, and I'll let her cycle back. Luckily, I know some of this stuff. She's probably going to have to cycle back because some of this is unique to her. So she will probably tell you that there is a difference between an early college and a middle-years college. And so on here, she talks about that the early college, our standalone high schools that offer their own diploma, but are not always located with a partner or on a college campus. They define a structured program and enable high school students to earn both their high school diploma and associate's degree in four to five years at no cost to the students. However, a middle college are those that are secondary schools, and they offer grant diplomas in their own name and located on college campuses that are structured. And she also indicates that for those, they combine the high school courses, classes leading to a high school diploma, and at least twenty-four credits that lead to an associate's degree in four or five years. So when she comes back, I'll let her get into more details because we always have this conversation around what, why do we name some, we call some early college, and you'll hear us a lot, a lot of times say, middle-years college. The interesting thing, when you see these programs that are off to the side, Three D Scholars, it's a program that she has. It operates out of Flowers High School. Academy of Health Sciences, which is a middle college, actually sits on the campus of Prince George's Community College. And therefore, because of that, the students graduate, of course, with an high school diploma and their associate's degree from Prince George's Community College if they finish. We have the Information Technology Early College, which we call it the ITech Program. That program is at our two charter schools, CMIT North and CMIT South. And then we have the Pathways in Technology Early College High School, which we call PTEC, and most of you would know that that's at Frederick Douglass. That program actually is a CTE program. However, although Dr. Cadet will come and talk about CTE, what this should show you is that we're all in each other's lane, right? So while PTEC is a perfect example of a CTE program, because it's dual enrollment and because Olivia handles all dual enrollment, she has to ensure everybody that touches anything dealing with the college, taking a course, anytime we're getting courses looked at, we have to go through Olivia and her role. So that's why we're intermingled, although we sit in different pockets of the system. And then Talent Ready is also a program, and I'm sure Dr. Cadet will tell you more about the pathways in early technology, our PTEC and our Talent Ready. But Talent Ready is a program where students can earn their associate's degree, and it's located at Largo High School, which sits, again, in the parking lot right next to Prince George's Community College. So it makes very easy access for those students. To tell a little bit about Three D Scholars, which is a little bit different than the others, students that go to take Three D Scholars, some of them finish their associates in high school, some of them do not. Some of them at the end may need one year at PG Community College, and then they go off to University of Maryland's Global They go off to University of Maryland's Global Campus where they will earn their degree. So parents going into that program are really clear, it's about a student who thrives online, who likes to take classes online. They have no problem at the end of Prince Georges, their associate's degree going off to the Global Campus and it offers a variety of things and I'm sure when. Ms. Pearson jumps back on, she will be able to go into more detail. Next slide. So our general dual enrollment program. Olivia, I've been trying to do you justice. I see that you are back. If we want to go back two slides, I kind of laid out for them. Andrika, if you could take me back. I went past that slide. I talked about how we, the students have an opportunity to go on campus and be in the school after the pandemic, there was more. Virtual, but kids do have an opportunity to go to all three campuses. Then the next slide. I did talk about, this is where I left off. If you want to just briefly talk through the difference of the early college and the middle college, I told them that. There's always a conversation, we know that like AHS, for example, is a middle years college, but we had this conversation. And then I kind of explained most of the programs and talked about how Three D Scholars ends up at the Global Campus, but I will let you pick up from here and then. Continue going.
Absolutely. My apologies, my internet was not happy. So. Yes, we have two models. We've got the early college model and the middle college model. Middle college is our Academy of Health Sciences where the school is physically on the college campus. However, it's its own high school, so they are a high school in itself. And our early college model is our most popular model and that is the school within a school model. And so we have these programs that are housed within our high schools. That are able to collaborate with higher ed institutions. To offer either a degree or some of them, students may get, let's say twenty or thirty credits towards a degree. So it doesn't have to be a full degree. It's just they are participating towards that or earning a degree towards that. Next slide, please. And so last year, we had over twenty-one hundred students who were enrolled in a dual enrollment course. Eighty-two percent of them earned a grade of A, B, or C. And eighty-seven percent of students earned a passing grade. Our most popular courses are listed here and I also just wanted to highlight a couple of our specialty programs. That we have kind of housed within some of our other higher ed institutions. I'm using the term specialty program kind of loosely, but it's. For example, we have a partnership specifically with the University of Maryland College Park. Where we're able to offer a calculus course for our students. Because we find when students matriculate on to four-year institutions, a lot of times. In math, even if they took a high school rigorous math. Sometimes they're given a placement test in the college and then they are taken back to a non-college credit. Bearing course. And so we have a partnership with College Park where we do a summer program with students. To give them college algebra. Because we found that their algebra skills really could be strengthened to to support the calculus course. And then they take a calculus course in the fall with College Park. We also are working with Bowie State University around some of our computer science courses. And so they're partnering with us to offer courses at specific times of day for students. So that the students are able to participate. Also, they have supplemented, let's say if students had to pay for fees, Bowie State University for some of these. Computer science courses have been able to supplement it so students. Are, it's at no cost to students. The same thing with the partnership with College Park, it is at no cost to students also. Okay. And so what are the benefits of dual enrollment? Students can earn college credit and high school credit simultaneously. And so we have a list of over a hundred courses. Where students, if they take those courses, they are also able to earn weighted high school credit. It can lower the overall cost for college. As well as assisting with students self-advocacy. As they're interacting with both their high school teachers as well as their college professors. And introducing them to the rigors and social life on a college campus. And so I have linked here a video of one of our Three D Scholars, his name is Davion Ward. He has earned his bachelor's degree prior to the age of twenty-one. He was one of our first Three D Scholars. He was able to accelerate the program so that he graduated from high school and college. And with his associate's degree at the same time and then he spent a year and a half at UMGC. And just earned his degree in criminal justice and he hopes to become an attorney one day. And so I don't know if we have time to look at it now, but it's here for your viewing. If you want to take a look at one of our scholars. And I believe that is the last slot and I am available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Board members, any questions? I have a question, if there were no questions. Do you see a with the? I think it's the early college because that's the one that's the high school that's collaborating with the higher ed institution, correct? Do you see a mix of students who take AP courses as well as? Courses on the on. With the colleges or universities or is it or? Or do you find that if they just do the track for the dual enrollment, they just do dual enrollment and don't mix the two? Just curious.
We see a mix. A lot of our dual enrollment students, they don't start dual enrollment until eleventh grade and so they may have. Experience with AP prior. And they also mix it once they get in eleventh grade. So if we have, let's say, an early middle college and. The students still may need like an English eleven credit, they may take that in an AP form instead of the high school version. They may take the AP version of that particular course and so we absolutely see a mix. And so we have been working with the colleges, you know, to make sure that if students are earning those AP credits, they're able to see. How and if it may fit into their degree.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
The only other thing I would add is even in our specialty programs, like for example, science and tech, we also. Made opportunities where a student may do their capstone and or. We've added courses that they could take so they can substitute certain things. You might be able to substitute to dual enrollment courses for this. We try to provide. A menu of options and you can see with it's so many options, you could have a student that says CTE. Also taking dual enrollment, also taking an AP course. You know, a lot of students like dual enrollment because you can take the course, you have immediate college credit. Versus the AP exam, you have to sit and you have to pass the test in order to get the credit. So we just have a lot of different options. It depends on who is the child. You know, and how that child learns best and how that child wants to be challenged and what type of way and what type of engagement.
And I may have missed this, Board Member Jackson, I see your hand. I'm gonna ask my last question. When they take the dual enrollment courses, I know pre-COVID, or maybe this was happening pre-COVID. Do they have to go on campus? Is it a? Combination of the two where some can go on campus, some can take them online. And then if they're taking them online, are they able to take it beyond the school days or is it done during the school day?
The, all great questions and the short answer is yes, all of the above. And so students are able to take asynchronous courses online. Once they've taken at least six credits, either face-to-face, hybrid, or remote. And they can take them either during the school day, in the evenings, on Saturdays, whatever fits their schedules.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Board Member Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say I had the opportunity to. Go and visit the Academy of Health and Science to see it. Firsthand, this is an amazing program. I was so excited. The students are excited, the faculty. It's just, it's like one of the, it's one of the, I think, marquee programs that we have. At PG CPS and I'm really thankful for. My question is that I think it's amazing the way we're engaging. I just wanted to know, do we engage? The trades in a similar fashion? Do we have something set up to connect with the, you know, that trade? Factor as well, just a question.
Sure, I'm gonna give you a short answer because I know Dr. Cadet's on and he's gonna have a plethora of information to share. But there are several of the early middle colleges that were shared earlier that are also CTE programs and so. The students do both and one thing that I'm really excited about with the blueprint legislation. Is it really speaks to this customization for students? And the good thing in PG CPS is we're already doing a lot of this work and so. Yes, there are, there is plenty of opportunities for students to to engage in the trades. And I will let Dr. Cadet kind of speak to that, but again, we have our P Tech program. Is a program that includes that certifications with the program, the same with talent ready. Also.
Thank you.
Board Member Adam Stafford?
Thank you so much and thank you for that presentation. I was wondering, I guess, my first question is around. Readiness for the program. So what are some of the things you all do to help students prepare socially and emotionally? For being in a college atmosphere because it's such an awesome opportunity and I just wonder. You know, if parents are thinking like this might be a great option for my child, like what are some things they should know? Additionally, do students receive like additional counsel, like a, like a targeted coach or counselor to navigate going into this space? Because it seems like you said, it's just so customized that, you know, students probably have someone kind of helping guide them and navigating. So just do students have that type of coaching or counseling support? And then I, I'm not as familiar with this program, so if you could just help me in a point of clarification. This is the early college program, is it focused on specific disciplines? Like students can go into science and health or, because I I see a lot of the overlap. As you're mentioning like with CTE and with AP, but. Are the programs that they're entering in in the colleges and universities, are those like limited to specific fields? That's my question. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Those were loaded, so I tried to take some notes because we have so much and and. So first, to get students ready. And so I'm gonna kind of approach this in two ways. We have the general dual enrollment program. Where students, once they complete tenth grade, they are able to participate as long as they meet a qualifying benchmark. And so for that, we have an orientation for the students. So even before the orientation, we do a parent info session. And so if if students qualify, we send them a communication. Letting them know that they qualify for this opportunity and inviting them and their parents to an info session. We just had one last week, I want to say it was March eighth, we had thirteen hundred registrants. And we had about six hundred participants and then we post though that information on our website and then we email it to all registrants. So they have the information to really let them know what this opportunity is and and how they can take advantage of it. Once they apply, we do virtual orientations with them. And the colleges also do an orientation. And so as a district, we're really a conduit to these higher, higher institutions. And so each institution will also have an orientation for the students to let them know. Basic information like. How to communicate with their professors, making sure they have their college email address and they can access the college systems. And so all of that takes place. And then we also instituted in COVID, a check-in process with students. And so all the students are registered for these courses and then every three, four weeks. We send a communication to register students saying, hey, I know you're in this college class. Rate it from one to five. How do you think you're doing? What do you think your grade is? Do you need additional support? If you are struggling with something, is there something we can help you with or is there an area you need assistance with? And so we send those out periodically to students to to just check on their status and see if they need any follow-up. And then for any of our students with special needs. And who may receive accommodations through an IAP plan or a five or four plan. We also have a separate orientation that really talks about self-advocacy. And how to advocate for if they need accommodations, what office to go to, how to communicate with their professors. And how to link their discipline, the Disability Support Services Office with support for their class. So that is for just getting them ready and understanding what they signed up for. The counseling, we have a partnership with Prince George's Community College. And over ninety percent of our students are participating through the community college. And so we have coast advisors that are housed in our high schools that assist students. One-on-one with all of the things that that we're talking about and they talk about potential courses. How to register for courses, their interests. And we have a lot of information on our website such that if a student may know the general area they want to go into. They are able to see what courses are recommended and highly transferable to other higher ed institutions. I want to go back a moment to the orientation for early middle college program students. They each have a summer bridge program or a summer orientation. Where prior to taking college classes, they are immersed on the college campus, working with the higher ed institutions, reviewing expectations and information. And there's a one-credit course that all the students begin with, which is basically like an intro freshman orientation course. That our early middle college students must take. And and lastly, the the different disciplines and so each one of our programs. Track a stu- tracks a student towards a specific degree. And so yes, students are degree-seeking, even if they don't finish all the credits when they're with us in high school. They are considered degree-seeking students. And we collaborate with the college so that each student has a specific degree plan. And they know what courses to take and when to take. So I think, I hope I answered.
The only other thing, Olivia, that I would add is that Prince George's Community Colleges are one dual enrollment. Middle years college that services the whole county. And for those students, you have to, fifty percent of those students are first generation. Fifty percent, first generation and or farms and the other fifty percent is not. So even in that, when you think about it, you think about the level of counseling. That a student has to have to make those decisions because for fifty percent of them, many times, you know, they're coming from homes where they're, they are the first ones, so they they need that support. And so those counselors also engage with them and they have supports where those counselors follow them. From their college course to the university. I think the biggest thing to note for any of our students that's in a dual enrollment course period. Is we have to, and Olivia said it, teach them advocacy, because once you're in college, you are in college. Our ninth graders that start at Academy of Health Science, they are in college. Our P Tech students, they are also in college. That means as a parent, you can't call, you can't call the college professor to ask them not a single question. Because you have to teach your child how to send an email on their behalf advocating. And asking questions because they are now dealing with a professor and not a high school teacher. So it is a, we'd have to teach and train them all of that.
I was just gonna say, I really love that, and it just sounds like you're really giving students that comprehensive support. And I guess my question for Dr. White is just, as you look at the, all of these programs that are preparing students for college and career readiness, have you all ever had a chance to? You know what? I'm gonna just email this question. I'm sorry. Meltdown, sorry.
No problem. If the meltdown stops before we get off, feel free to come back because we still have to go through CTE. So we'll give you another chance to come back and ask it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, my son was a graduate of the second year of the Academy of Health Sciences. And one of the biggest things that came out of him and his classmates was when they went on campus, they knew how to maneuver the college campus. They knew how to advocate for themselves. They understood office hours. You know, just the little things that sometimes may set students back. He and his classmates were really ahead of the game when they went registering for classes. By the time you went on campus, it's like done. So it really does a phenomenal job from the ninth grade, that shocker of you can't call the school, to, okay, so now the trust factor, and the school really does a phenomenal job in coaching the children on how to do that. Board Member Jackson.
Yeah, I think we kind of touched on this a little bit, but I just wanted to get some clarity. Like, for example, with the Agathemic Health and Science Academy, Academy of Health and Sciences, like, when you're in the 10th grade, as you go over school over the summer, and you ended up graduating with a high school diploma and you graduate with your associate's degree. When you start college at 18, you are like essentially like almost a sophomore, if not going into your junior year, whatever. One of the questions that I had is, I remember when I was an undergrad, you know, people are way older than you, you know, and they're second and third year of college. And so you're dealing with 21, you know, you're 20, 21 years old, and you may be 18, 17, 18 going in. So like, the mental health component, like just about confidence and just coaching kids around, do we have any support in that space, just to kind of give them the confidence to be competitive in that area? And know that they are, they do deserve to be here, that they are, you know, smart enough, just as much as everyone else. So I was just wondering about that.
So in addition to the PGCC advisor, each of the students still has a professional school counselor. And for some of our early middle program, college programs, those counselors are also really dedicated to looking at all of those pieces. But that's really kind of what worried us when we went into the pandemic, to your point, that we didn't have that, that, you know, those touch points with students. And so the check-ins have been amazing, the virtual check-ins with students. We have instituted since the pandemic. And so I think that that is one of our first layers of really working with the students and just understanding that that's part of what the students are getting also with their high school.
Yeah, and the only other thing I would add to that is most of our kids that graduate their associates and they go on to a four-year university, you'll hear them say, I'm an entering freshman with junior status, which is a powerful statement. But by the time they get to that four-year university, normally their counselors and especially their Academy of Health Science, they'll have them enter as a freshman because then they get freshman dorm, freshmen. So they're around their peers, but in their classes, by now, they know how to hang with adults. They, because they've done it in high school. So by the time they get to the four-year university, they're fine.
I think if I can circle back around, Madam Chair, the meltdown is over.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I think this is just an awesome opportunity for students. And my question is, have, because you have these various programs that are, you know, college and career-focused, are you all looking at, you know, which of these programs has been the most effective in helping students get to that four-year graduation from college mark? Like, if you are forecasting out, you know, students in the, you know, early college program or students that take AP courses, you know, when you graduate from PGCPS and you're in one of these programs, you know, you're, this time is more likely to graduate from college or like you, the rate of graduating from college is X. And if you haven't looked at this data, like, this is just kind of like hypothetical speaking. I don't know if this is like a totally common practice, looking at like clearinghouse data in that way. But I'm just saying, the huge investment that you're making on this end of like providing students with these amazing soft skills that, you know, they need to succeed in college, I would just think that would be a great selling point for our district that not only do we have these great programs, but when you go through these programs, guess what? You're more likely to blank, or you know, just giving that kind of as a point to share. That's just a thought. I don't even know if that was a question now, but that's just kind of where I was thinking after the presentation.
So there's a lot of national data that supports early middle college programs. And we are actually in the process of trying to take a look at the clearinghouse data and tying it back. It's not a simple process because as we know, there's so many additional factors that go on, go along with post-secondary success, and cost is a huge one, which is what we're trying to attack early in their high school. But that's absolutely, I think, something that we as a district can take a look at in the future.
All right. Board Member Jackson, do you have another question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a school board, is it a matter of the way that that is cut? I was gonna say, how can we help you, you know, in helping us, you know, paint that narrative, you know, from an analytical or data standpoint as a school board? Is it like, do you need more funds for like data scientists to cut the data a certain way that can be, you know, that could pertain to PGCPS particularly? Because I know, you know, that is only, I mean, that is only useful if you have it cut the right way. So like, do we need more, you know, data scientists that can look at it and kind of like cull down the information to be, you know, more focused on our students was one of the questions that I had. So first, I'll let you answer that.
And so I don't even know if I can answer that right now, to be honest. We are just, again, kind of trying to take a look at this information and data because it's, again, it's a lot. We have a lot of graduates. And this program in this way started around 2014, 2015. So it's really all-encompassing. But I so appreciate the interest in the offer. And so I will circle back through Dr. White, once we've had a chance to kind of take a look and see what's needed.
Appreciate that. And then I guess my follow-up question was, you know, essentially, your first, your first two years of college, I mean, no matter if you're, you know, a biomedical major, economics major, or a teacher, like, we really take in mostly gen ed classes, like, we're all doing the same. And when I was, you know, talking to Dr. Valentine over at the Health Sciences, Academy of Health Sciences, I think one of the deterrents for a lot of kids is they're like, yeah, because, you know, they specialize in teaching and, you know, stuff like that. So they're like, we don't want to be teachers, so we don't need to go. But I think if, and I guess it's more of a statement, and we can kind of like paint the narrative different or explain like, hey, look, you can get your first year or two worth of, you know, general education credits. You don't have to be a teacher if that's not what you want to do. But it's still more, it's still beneficial, and it probably, depending on what college, you know, like, colleges, you know, some of them, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year, they could save you up to like $150,000, you know, for your first two years of school. So I think if we kind of talk through it a little bit more to the parents about, you know, the value that we get from being a part of these type of programs, I think we'll have more interest.
That's a great point, and we'll absolutely keep that in mind, absolutely.
But what I would say to that is the current programs that we have around certain disciplines, they're going to remain that, and we're going to push that. So Academy of Health Science, for example, is a health science and it's a teacher prep. I'm not going to tell a parent that you can come here and get 60 credits because we use that teacher prep as a grow-your-own model. So if you're coming into my teacher prep, I want it because you have a desire in your heart to be an educator, and you want to come back hopefully to us and teach our kids. Now, our dual enrollment program, you are absolutely right, the state and Olivia may say this wrong. You could have a child who is taking dual enrollment courses that can gain enough to graduate with 30, 40, 50 credit hours before they ever leave high school that their parents would not have to pay for. But if you're coming into PTEC, you're going to come into PTEC and you're going to have to take that, you need a desire to take those courses for careers that that will jump you off, the jumpstart. So I can't go against that for those particular programs and say, oh, yeah, even though it says health sciences, actually, don't worry about any of that. Just come take, because you're still going to take classes. Like, if you don't want to be a teacher, those teacher courses, they're going to take some courses that while you take biology and a couple of regular courses, it's going to be some courses that are not general. So they'll spend 30 credit hours taking some very specific courses that won't help you anywhere else. So we have, that's why we have so many different models, because we don't want any kid not to feel that they can't take it, nor a kid to come through and not feel like they can't earn enough credits, like I said, 30, or even associate's degree before they ever leave high school. So we will continue thinking through how to promote it, as Olivia said, so that parents know that the cost savings that it does save them.
And if I could add, Board Member Jackson, thank you so much for your comment and asking how you all can support our programs. And one tangible, easy win for us is for you to continue to assist us by promoting our specialty program showcase that is held every fall where all of our programs are represented. It is exceptionally done. The program supervisors and coordinators and their team members are excited, they're passionate about their programs, and they provide white-glove service, if you will, in answering every single question that parents and students have. So once we establish the date and we start promoting and marketing that again for the upcoming school year, we certainly will continue to partner with you to promote that. And I also want to add for specifically the program at Academy of Health Sciences, we also want to ensure that students are there for the right reason. Because selecting a school like, a program like AHS means that you are not going to have the traditional high school experience. And so some students also want to engage in the tradition. And we know that Dr. Valentine and her team are trying to have more dances and some of the social things that you'll have in a traditional high school. So we also want to make sure that students are where they will blossom.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Definitely can never promote that, you know, especially in my chat and choose. I just want to say, I wasn't, I definitely am a supporter of, you know, growing your own and, you know, creating this, you know, PGCPS pipeline or ecosystem from sending kids from our schools to college, coming back to teach, back in PGCPS. I was just saying as an example, you know, kids can get a part of, become part of one of those, one of those programs where they can leverage, you know, the opportunity to get credits and stuff like that going towards college, no matter what particular, you know, lane it's in or specialty program they're saying, that's all.
We agree.
Thank you so much. I'm looking at the time, and I want to make sure that the CTE program has time. So we will transition, Dr. White, if that's okay with you, to the next program.
Yes, Dr. Cadet, we turn it over to you. You are on mute, and I'm sure you're saying some wonderful things.
No, I was just saying, let me get my slideshow together, and I was saying, you know, I want to make sure it's up before I start talking. I didn't realize I was mumbling out loud. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for taking time to view the presentation on current technical education in Prince George's County Public Schools. So this evening, I'd like to provide an overview and updates regarding CTE programming. And the overarching goal of CTE is to provide students with real-world life experiences that they can use in whatever options they choose upon graduation, be it at a community college, at a four-year institution, at a trade school, in the military, or in the workforce. So one of the key identifiers of all things that are CTE, in order to be considered a CTE program, you must meet three criteria, and that is you, it must be high wage, high skill, and high demand. So that means that we're not just training students for basic entry-level positions. We're training them for things that require a high skill, it is a high-demand profession, and it is also something where they will earn a high wage. So the way that our programs are provided, they're split up across these clusters. And as you can see, based on the clusters here on the screen, we offer a program that will address almost every occupation that currently exists, and even some those that are in development. So we offer a program, at least, at least one program at all of our schools. We also have programs at the middle, at the middle school level. And we also have Amazon boot up at some of our elementary schools. And that's an opportunity where students are able to learn coding from elementary. Our programs are broken down as either at the designation of two, three, or four years. And students are eligible to attend from various parts of the county based on the boundary map for the respective programs at the respective schools. If I am a student, let's say, at Northwestern, and I'm interested in the electrical program, then that means that in my junior and senior year, I would go to Bladensburg because that is the next closest CTE school that offers construction, carp, construction, electrical as a CTE path. So I know that there was a lot of conversation earlier from Ms. Pearson's presentation around early middle colleges. And even when Ms. Anna Lee made the comment around the specialty programs. So we have a beautiful blend and mix of both. So we offer the 3DE by Junior Achievement, which focuses on business and marketing, business and finance, marketing, entrepreneurship, and that is currently run out of Potomac and out of Furman? No, Suratsville, right. And then we have our PTEC, which was mentioned earlier, that is housed out of Douglas. We also have our Public Safety Academy, which is housed out of Suratsville. And then we have our Talent Ready Program, which Dr. White did an eloquent job of discussing, which is housed out of Largo High School. So the bread and butter of CTE comes as a result of our TSAs. Our Technical Skills Assessments are how our students demonstrate their mastery of the information by achieving their industry certifications, endorsements, or licensees. Every industry has their own TSA. So the important thing to know is that the test that these students take is an industry-level test. It is not a high school-level test. It's not a beginner's test. It is, if I am walking into the professional field, this is the test I would need. So I would take the Power Pro. I would take CompTIA. I would take the, well, for the Maryland Board of Nursing, it would be the Nursing License or Examination. So whatever the pathway is, we have a exam, I mean, a TSA, a license, or transcripted credits that will follow the students as a supplement for the TSA for many of our programs. So this is a brief list of the basic level of TSAs that we offer. In many instances, we're able to offer stackable credentials. So a student can leave and graduate from our programs with multiple assess, I mean, multiple credentials based on the TSAs that they take. And then we worked with the Office of Communications to develop a And then we, um, worked with the Office of Communications to develop a quick snapshot of five reasons to choose CTE. Um, three of which I've already mentioned. Um, and then the last is the mentoring apprenticeship, um, and internship. Which also speaks to the comment from board member Jackson around what we're doing to make sure that our students are prepared once they leave. Because what happens is, is our students are, receive wraparound services and mentoring. From industry level people as well as their school level, um, instructors and central office, um, support staff. And then the five more reasons why people should choose CTE is that CTE, um, students completed higher rates of graduation. They're, they, they graduated over ninety percent. And then they're also able to, they're also completing college at a ninety-one percent completion rate. Because they're going in similar to what was already said, they're going in with articulated credit or transcripted credit. Or they're going in with an early middle college associate's degree, or they have some type of. Or they're already focused on what it is they want to major in when they go to college. So they are set and they, uh, matriculate at a much higher rate than their counterparts. Um, yep, okay, so. So then that really takes us down in terms of the blueprint. I know that we've touched on the blueprint a little bit. Um, but a lot of the blueprint. It, there was some alignment that they're still working out because the blueprint doesn't recognize. TSAs per se as it is defined in the current MSDE manual. Um, the way that the blueprint focuses more is on student credentialing. Whereas CTE, oh, you know, focuses on making sure that the students complete the program of study. And if there is an associated credentialing, then absolutely obtain it. But then there's also the focus on, um, programs such as Homeland Security and Project Lead the Way. Where there is not a specific certification, however, there is college credit and there's transcripted. Um, credits that follow the student once they complete the program. So that is, uh, something that we are evaluating, um, as we are navigating, um, the blueprint. So, and we're also looking at some of the conflict that exists between Perkins and what the blueprint, uh, stipulates as a. Marker of achievement, because in terms of Perkins, um, TSAs was the, was the primary. Primary litmus for success, whereas that is not necessarily the litmus for success as it is the blueprint. So Prince George's County Public Schools is one of pretty much still the only red school district that serves as a registered. Youth Apprenticeship Program. And there's a difference, that's why I created this chart. Because oftentimes you hear apprenticeships and apprenticeship is used broadly, whereas there are two kinds. So there is the youth apprenticeship, which is the general one that you will always hear about. That's the one where you will have people saying, hey, I want some students to come and be an apprentice at my, at my organization or my company. That's the youth apprenticeship. Registered apprenticeship is where we have taken a responsibility to say, we want to be the employment provider for these students. We want to oversee their training, we want to oversee their education, we want to make sure that they are trained and prepared. It to the point where we will also guarantee hiring them at the end of their, um, journeyman's rotation. So we, Prince George's County Public Schools are a registered apprenticeship provider. And we primarily have been focused on, um, in terms of our grow your own with, through our construction trades program. And then we're also expanding that into our teacher academy initiatives and with our IT, uh, programs of study. So in terms of apprenticeships, there was a great deal of talk in the blueprint around apprenticeships and their vision for apprenticeships. And although a lot of careers don't require a four-year degree, they do require, um, more training than that of just a traditional diploma. So that's where a lot of our skills and trades, um, programming comes into place in the. Form of apprenticeships, internships, externships and other, um, industry exposure, experiential learning opportunities. That we provide our students. And the question of how can you support CTE? Uh, you can definitely promote CTE programs, which you can constituents, you can absolutely serve on a program advisory committee. Uh, we have two different committees. We actually have four different ways that people can, uh, blend into the work we do. One is through a program advisory committee where you would say, I'm interested in this particular field or pathway. And then each one of those has its own program advisory and then you'd be able to join that team to speak around the specific work we're doing. In that area. Um, and then there's also the local advisory committee where that is the general broader, where we have all of our industry stakeholders. And elected officials and different representatives come and they just talk about the work. Of CTE, they talk about what they see in the industry and they kind of help it give us, um, consultation around the directions we need to be. Um, exploring and some of the new innovations that are out in the field that we can take part of. Uh, another ways to propose and support new innovative pathways. Um, provide registered youth apprenticeship opportunities. And that means again, where if you are a business owner or have an affiliation with a various business. Then there's a process by which you can sign up to be an apprenticeship provider and then bring on some of our students. Just this year alone, we've had several board members reach out, um, to some of their stakeholders and they've been able to come back to us. And now we have apprenticeships with, where we're setting up a meeting with Esc- the escalator and elevator. Union for the Washington Metro Transit Authority. We also have a pro- a program underway currently with the United Vendors where they're, whoever thought about vending machines? So we actually have a track right now. We have twenty-four students that are, um, in that program as well. We also have a program with IEC Chesapeake for students that are not in a traditional CTE path, but are interested in being an electrician. They're able to participate in that apprenticeship as well. So we have, um, a plethora of avenues where students can access the CTE world. Through apprenticeships and through other, um, experiences. And then, uh, getting involved in looking at some of our policies, um, around hiring restrictions, immigration reform. And all the things that we always talk about. And if you have any questions, here are all the contact informations and I'll leave this slide up while I answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Okay, I'll start. Um. Dr. Cadet, thank you so much for this extensive overview of the CTE program. And I know, um, you tried to condense it a little and we may, uh, chat a little later. But one of the things that I was actually happy to see is when you talked about, um. Maybe fifteen years ago, if you would have asked educators, where do students go? They go to college, right? And now that, that, that trajectory has changed, you know, um, students now, um. Need the options for the CTE programs and just putting the data across in terms of. How they do or how they perform, even those who choose to go to college after that is really, um, advantageous. And we can use that as we go out to our constituents and promote the CTE programs, um, to our community. So thank you for having that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I had a question and I, I, I think I got, so I, can you? I know you explained the difference between the youth apprenticeship and the registered apprenticeship. Um. I didn't quite get it. So, um, I, what I understood was the youth apprenticeship was a, um. I guess the company says you can come in and get the on-the-job training. So what's the difference between that and the registered apprenticeship?
Great question. Youth apprenticeship is more like SYEP. It almost serves like an internship. It's like, hey, I want to bring you on. It's like we're dating. I don't know if we're ready yet. I don't know where this is going, but let's kind of see. Registered apprenticeship is no, you're my person. I'm with you. We're, we're here. I'm hiring you. The goal is to hire you in a registered apprenticeship. Whereas in a youth apprenticeship, it's, I think you have an interest in this. Come into the field and if by the end of it, if I have an opening and this is a good fit. Then we can go ahead and talk and if not, maybe I could work, you will have the credentials and the experience to go to any other job, any other organization in this field.
Did that help? Got it. Yes, that helped a whole lot. Thank you.
Based on, on our, on Prince George's County being a registered apprenticeship. We actually hire some of our students. So those students that, so each year we've hired about three to four students in our, um. So.
Building services?
Yeah, like, in, uh, mm-hmm, some of them are electricians in our electric, electrical shop, like they're actually working. So they are now, they've moved from student, they've graduated, they're an employee.
Right.
That makes sense. Thank you. And I didn't, I, I didn't catch that in terms of, so the registered apprenticeship, Prince George's County is in the, um. Is a registered apprenticeship, so you can hire your, our, our own students. Once they finish the, um, training. That's excellent. Thank you.
No, we hired them the summer between their junior and senior year. And then they get their on-the-job training during your senior year. And then after they graduate, we continue work, they become full-time employees at the end of their senior year. And then we also work with them as they're receiving their remaining on-the-job training hours through their journeyman's licenses.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Wow, that's, that's pretty good. For Tim, Judy McInnes-Murray and then, um, board member Jackson.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I am extremely excited about this CTE program. Uh, and what I'm trying to figure out is how do we celebrate this? How do we get the state of Maryland? To recognize this as successful as the academic criteria that they put on our children? Because to me, when you create a workforce, that's success. When a child can go out after high school and be employed because they're getting certificates, that's success. So I guess what I'm looking for and maybe not for tonight. But we need to work on being the first district to get the state of Maryland to recognize there are more ways to measure success. Than just the proficiency in reading and math. So any help that we can get with that, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Jackson.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mc- uh, Judy McInnes-Murray. Um, that it's an amazing program and it just seems like when students. Have something else like attached to their educational experience, like if it's CTE or some type of specialty program. That they, like you said, it was like, I, I don't remember the numbers exactly, like ninety something percent, um, success rate. It seemed like students excel or they are committed to graduating when they have something else tethered to education. And I think that is, you know, an amazing thing and how we can leverage that even more. It can be great. But my question and, um, that I had was, um, about the partners, um, are we partnering with, um. Any, uh, labor unions and you may have covered it, I may have missed it, like are we partnering with any, uh, labor unions? Um, local labor unions in the area, um, to help our students get hired?
Yes, we are. We partner with all the unions to be, to be, uh, more succinct. Uh, just in November, we had a, what we called a CTE crawl where we took, um, school administrators, different, um. Central office staff and professional school counselors around to see all of the work and partnerships we have with our local unions. So that they're able to see like, oh, these are the supports that are available for our students. Wait, these are the types of environments where our students will come and get trained, these are the types of opportunities and salaries that are available? So yes, we definitely have a, a, a really robust, uh, partnership with our local unions and trades organizations.
Great. Um, yeah, I'd like to follow up maybe offline, you know, just about some of those. Uh, partnerships that I've, I've received, um, some emails from, um, labor unions that are interested in our students. And so, um, I don't know if I can funnel those questions to you or one of your assistants or something like that.
No, you could definitely send them, yeah.
You can actually send them to Dr. Golson and she'll filter them to us.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that, thank you so much, um, board member Jackson. We really appreciate any support.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, board members?
Um, I'm sorry that I had to hop off, um, briefly. And I, I'll actually send some follow-up questions through Dr. Golson to Dr. Cadet as well. And I'm not sure if you touched on this already, but I wanted to know, um, you, I know last year we had talked a bit about, um. You know, literacy within CTE programs and supporting students in passing, uh, those, uh, trade exams. And so I was wondering, um, you know, what, um. If, if there were any updates or, uh, different, um, strategies or. Uh, resources that were being used to just support students with some of the, the technical components of passing those exams. Or even any different tra- any other training that might be happening for. Some of like the industry professionals to support students in, in passing those, those industry exams.
Yes, we've actually, um, put forth a very intentional, comprehensive, um, instructional plan for students. Especially when we know that they're approaching the time to take the TSA. Like we're looking at the TSA almost like how we used to look at SAT. So for the moment you get into a CTE program, we start talking TSA, we start making sure that students understand test format. We understand it, because to me literacy about, test literacy isn't just about knowing the words. It's about being prepared fully, it's about being able to understand, read the directions, like, you know, is it a true false? Is it a, you know, open-ended, all of those types of things. So we go through a lot of test prep with our students and what we try to do is several months with, within, by the second quarter. We go through, um, setting up TSA bootcamps. Where again, students are able to do mock simulations where they're able to, um, have some type of experience with that. We also bring in our industry, um. Industry-related stakeholders where they're also able to say, you know, as a cosmetologist, you want to remember one, two, three, four. As an engineer, one of the key things you want to know when you walk onto a work site are three, four, five, six. As a nurse practitioner, you know, you must always know that ABCs of one, two, three. So we definitely make sure that, um, students are prepared. We make sure that they receive as much support as, as much, um, contextual support, as much wraparound support as possible. We also have worked with, um, we're working with setting up, um, an initiative with the public library system. Where they offer online, free online, um, supports for students who want to prepare for those tests as well. Where they can go and do mock tests and mock simulations as well, um, through the Maryland Public Library System. So we are looking, we have explored, um, a variety of avenues where students have the ability. To receive that level of support remediation and, and, um, literacy training towards achieving and passing their TSAs.
That's awesome. I'm happy to hear that, um, you know, based on our conversation and sort of what, what you all have, um. Uh, oh, sorry, I've been working on, I, I was actually wondering, I, I know that the, um, okay, so we'll add one of the things that. Um, Miss, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting her name, uh, Miss, uh. I don't think she, oh, Miss Hall was mentioning with the AP, um, students there. Were you saying that they were doing like a summer program for preparing for the AP exam, like a summer camp? And Dr. Cadet, is the camp that you're mentioning, is that something that's happening like during the year to support students in passing the exam? Or, and maybe I may have been getting some wires crossed.
Yeah, though, yeah, those are two different, yeah, those are two different things, but no, that we do the TSA bootcamp during the school year.
During the year. Is that, would you consider doing something in the summertime? Would that be something that you would? That you need maybe some support with to, because I, I just know those exams are, they're challenging. So, yeah.
They are, and one of the pieces of feedback we received was that it is better to do the T, the bootcamps while school is in session. While they're able to receive that ongoing reinforcing instruction. Whereas if we do, and then also keeping in mind that the summer has so many competing programs and so many competing options. That we know, as we know, it's important, we know that the best time to help reinforce these things based on what our data is showing. Is when we're doing it in real time in tandem with the instructor, um, as the students are building up to the actual test.
Okay, um, and then I was wondering also, um, in terms of like some of the new technologies that are coming out. And if our IT department would be working with this, um, specifically around artificial intelligence. And so. With the rise of like ChatGPT and, you know, how, you know, so many new careers are being developed, like as we speak. Um, I was wondering if there are opportunities for students to do some. I was wondering if there are opportunities for students to do some internships, or just learn more about, you know, getting, getting into a career in AI or cloud computing, or I think cloud computing probably falls under IT already. But I'm just interested to see, like, if we're doing anything along that lines.
Short answer to your question is yes. We have several programs that do already focus on AI coding, and it's so funny you said that, because I remembered when we did the feature on, was it Channel Four? I think it was on Channel, whatever, it was on the news recently, and when we were there, we were demonstrating how we do have the robotic arm, where you can program the arm for students or individuals who need a prosthesis, prosthesis, and we are teaching students how to program the arm for an amputee. So we do, we're at that level with our students, we're there. So students, especially like in the Talent Ready Program, students in, at Wise, they're also getting that information, and then we also have that featured in our biotechnology programs as well. So we are covering that level of innovation. And then the sec, to answer the second part of your question, the thing that helps us is, again, by you all's involvement, by sharing some of those insights through our program advisory committees, our local advisory committees, because that's when people are able to say, hey, listen, you all need to get on this cutting edge of what we're doing in ARVR. Hey, you need to get on the cutting edge of what we're doing with AI and cloud computing. And we've taken that feedback, and that's how we're able to, right now, deliver the programs and pathways that we have currently for our students.
I'd be interested if you could share with us more about the local advisory committees, maybe not at this time, but I know that Board Member Jackson and I have talked about revitalizing our MBE and our local business advisory committee for the board, and so I'd love to hear kind of what you're already doing, just so that we can get a better understanding of what's already happening in terms of getting support from the greater business community in terms, like you were saying, getting advice. And I just want to say, whatever you all are doing with coding, I have just seen it in action, it's awesome. I've been to, I was at Fairmont Heights and at Flowers, and just seeing ninth graders online coding, doing coding activities, and super engaged. It was just really great to see, and just the concept of CS for All. I've seen it in the high schools that I've gone into, so I just want to say, congrats, you know, kudos to you on that, for sure.
Thank you, and I would like to say, I just appreciate each and every one of you, because I've seen all, everybody came out and showed up for something for CTE Month, and you know, you all's level of support, your level of just pushing out what we're doing out to the constituency. Like, we went from nine hundred and thirty-eight total applications to five thousand, five thousand eighty-seven in just one year. You know what I mean? So like, we have waitlists now for programs that were woefully under-enrolled in any other year. So I just thank you all for the work you all are doing in helping spread the word in the work that we're putting forth for our students.
Hey, looking at the time, and I would be remiss, Dr. White, Dr. Cadet, and team, thank you, because you have done a lot with the CTE program to ensure that the community is aware and the benefits of the CTE program, so students have choices, you know, for those who say, you know, not college yet, and, or let me try this, and then I, you know, so you, you've given them the options for them to really look at, okay, so here's some other options I can try, and what I'm still trying to decide what I want to do. So let us go up for follow-up items. Colleagues, the follow-up items for the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three committee meeting will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt, and I would like to thank the public, my colleagues, the Prince George's County Public School staff, and administration, and the Board Office staff for joining us this evening, and for your extensive presentations tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you, every, thank you, everybody. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye, aye. So we will adjourn at seven oh seven PM. Thank you again, and have a great evening.
Thank you.